Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Council's special meeting for Thursday, May 15th. If you'll please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're going to move on to public comments. This portion of the meeting is specifically set aside for comments from the public who are asked to limit their comments to two minutes. Any person interested in providing public comment via email should email publicmeetings@rockyhillct.gov prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to have their comment read into the record. Would anyone like to be heard from the public? So please state your name and address.
My name is Herschel Johnny and I live at 22 Hawthorne Circle.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and respected Town Council members. My name is Herschel Johnny, which I said. I'm a fifth grader at Moser Intermediate School. I'm a member of the BAPs charities. I have participated in the BAPs charities walkathon for six years. It goes without saying that exercise can benefit both your physical as well as mental health, but it could also help others create lasting impact. The model for our 2025 walkathon is the spirit of services. By participating in BAPs charities, we have supported various national as well as local organizations. I was able to support last year's walkathon by going door-to-door and collecting money to support our local heroes. I would like to invite you all to join me on June 1st, 2025, 4:00 PM at Elmridge Park in Rocky Hill. Hope to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Hello, I'm Smian Tucker. I'm from 98 Kobe Road. Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Smian and I'm an eighth grade student at GMS. I'm here to share my experience having participated in the annual walkathon that BAPs charity holds and how it's continued to get more and more meaningful as I grow up. When I was younger, I had taken part in the event, although I had not done much work fundraising. However, last year, my parents and I had went door-to-door in neighborhoods in Rocky Hill and in Newington to fundraise. I had a wonderful time talking to the householders and explaining how the cause would benefit the community. I was also surprised to see so many people donating, and I'm grateful for the generosity. During the walk as well, I had the time of my life, not just because we got to play at Elmridge Park, but also seeing so many people walk alongside each other for this cause and to help our community. Just taking a little time to give back has provided me with a greater meaning for my life and who I am as a person. This year, I've set a goal to fundraise for $200 and I hope to motivate even more people to come and join us on Sunday, June 1st, for the walkathon. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful job. Would anyone else like to be heard? So just so the public knows, we are not allowed to make or engage in any types of conversation during public comment, but I will say that on behalf of the council, we're always delighted when our youth come in and speak with us, and so thank you for doing that. So now we'll move on to new business, A budget adoption and set mill rate 2025-2026 budget.
Do I begin by reading the resolution? Okay. Town Council Resolution, May 15, 2025, Town Council Budget Adjustments. Whereas the Town Council has recommended the following budget adjustments to the Town Manager's proposed budget 2025-26, be it resolved that the following budget adjustments for the 2025-26 fiscal year are approved. Okay. I'm just going to read the line item and the account name and the category name and count name and the amount. So, line one, personnel, full-time salaries, deduct $90,000. Line two, personnel, part-time salaries, add $50,000. Line three, property assessment, training, deduct $3,000. Line four, property tax collection, postage, deduct $1,000. Line five, central supplies fees, deduct $25,000. Line six, legal, tax appeals, deduct $10,000. Line seven, registrar voters, part-time salaries, deduct $7,600. Line eight, information technology telephone, add $41,420. Information technology photocopier, add $30,000. Line 10, economic development, full-time salaries, deduct $90,939. Line 11, economic development, part-time salaries, add $65,000. Line 12, police administration telephone, deduct $33,000. Line 13, police uniform patrol, overtime, deduct $20,000. Line 14, police uniform patrol, motor fuel and lubricants, deduct $5,000. Fire Department Administration telephone, deduct $8,420. Fire Department Administration uniforms and cleaning, deduct $8,000. Line 17, Fire Department firefighting, staff activity, deduct $7,500. Line 18, Volunteer Ambulance Association fees, deduct $84,234. Line 19, Highway Garage, tires and tubes, deduct $10,000. Line 20, Highway Road Maintenance, overtime, deduct $30,000. Highway Road Maintenance Equipment Rental, deduct $5,000. Highway Road Maintenance Materials and Supplies, deduct $11,000. Line 24, Engineering Support Services, deduct $20,000. Sanitation Grinding Services, deduct $25,000. Health District Support Services, add $8,000. Line 27, Park Area Grounds, Field Maintenance Supplies, deduct $10,000. Line 28, Human Services Senior Programs, Part-Time Salaries, deduct $30,000. Line 29, Recreation Organized Activities, Printing, deduct $2,000. Line 30, Recreation Aquatic Program Maintenance, deduct $5,000. Line 31, Facilities Building Maintenance, Building Repair, deduct $3,000. Core Building Library Full-Time Salaries, deduct $65,510. Core Building Library, Library Books, deduct $5,000. Line 34, Education, Board of Education, deduct $300,000. Line 35, Employee Benefits, Group Insurance, deduct $75,000. Line 36, Employee Benefits, Social Security, deduct $20,000. Line 37, Employee Benefits, Employee Pension, deduct $732,000. Continuity Reserves, Continuity Account, add $100,000. Line 39, Capital Improvements, Building Improvements, deduct $150,000. Line 40, Capital Improvements, Park Equipment, deduct $55,000. And line 41, Capital Improvements, Repairs to Roads, Highway, deduct $300,000. And that's a net deduction of $1,982,783. The foregoing resolution was adopted by the Rocky Hill Town Council at its May 15, 2025 Special Town Council Meeting. Joanne Booth, Council Clerk. Do I read the other resolution for the mill rate?
No, you gotta do a motion.
Oh, we gotta do that motion first. Okay. So we need a second.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
So please discussion to post some questions to the Town Manager?
Yeah.
And Finance Director, thank you. So the item that most jumps out at me...
Well, one second.
Oh, sorry.
I just wonder pursuant to like Roberts rules, the person who made the motion ought to go first?
Fair enough.
Let's do that. Let's just...
Then I can stop talking. Thanks, Madam Mayor. So I'm going to keep my comments brief because you heard me speak a lot and I gotta speak again. So, but first I want to thank the Town Manager and Finance Director for all the help they've given us in this process, all the department heads for presenting and giving us the information, as well as our fellow Town Council members. Just to give a little bit of background information, we're going to talk about what the proposed mill rate's going to be increasing. Part of that is from increasing expenditures, part of it is from a grantless reduction. There's a couple items that led to the grantless reduction. The real estate part of the grant list is reduced a little bit because there were some tax appeals where the town lost the cases, so that reduced that amount. Personal property, as part of the grant list, actually increased a bit. And lastly, motor vehicles, part of the grant list decreased due to how the state changed in the value of motor vehicles. So those are a few challenges we had. Also, just a comment about some of our revenue sources. So we don't really get into revenue. That's up to the staff to estimate revenue, but just one item to bring out is that under the pilot program, if the state of Connecticut had funded our town, what we're owed, we're about $3 million short of what they should be giving us. That's equivalent to about 1.03 mills. And you can compare that to the 1.07 proposed mill rate increase, so you can kind of do the math from there. As always, the budget process is the challenging balancing act. Lots of priorities, one department to another, and of course versus the mill rate. I mean, even if you're a family with kids in school, you want to see obviously good schools, but you also don't want to see your taxes go up. So even within your own house, you've got the dilemma of both sides of the equation. As evidenced by the number of budget adjustments we had this year and the fact that our Finance Director can no longer talk, we did a lot of work to talk with every department. We looked very hard at every department to see what we could and couldn't do in a prudent fashion. We explored countless ways to reduce expenditures. As I said, we worked extensively with the Town Manager and our Finance Director, and I think we found enough prudent cuts to try to get the mill rate as low as possible without sacrificing the outstanding town services, education system, and public safety that we all experience in town. So we'll talk about this in a minute, but we're proposing the mill rate goes to 30.24. It's three-quarters of a mill less than what was originally budgeted in the Town Manager's original budget proposal. The overall expenditures from last budget, or the budget from the 24-25 budget year, is only a 1.6% increase. The town expenditure, so if you break it out between the town and Board of Ed, because Board of Ed is such a major part, the town part of that equation is the expenditures are actually decreasing slightly by about .8%. Board of Ed expenses, and not surprisingly because it's just the nature of what Board of Ed is, is increasing 3.7%. So again, you know, everybody's helped. We worked hard. We touched so many different things. Some things we left alone, some things we felt we could do a little bit of adjustment for. So we think we got to a good place here. So that I'll leave it to... Oh, Dave seconded it.
Just because he seconded it.
Yeah.
No, I just want to reiterate everything Jeff said about the thank you. You know, I think the public coming up and making their comments and their trust in us is also worthy of thanking. Obviously, without the department heads, we wouldn't have an idea of what they're thinking. And of course, Ray and Mona with the constant questions and giving us back the research that we needed to make some of these tough decisions. And the endless hours my caucus had spent, and of course, what we're doing now as a Town Council. You know, our job is to put, you know, the decisions we make in the best position we can to plan, accommodate, and make subsequent adjustments. And during these inflationary times where, you know, we're still at a 3% plus inflation rate, and yet we've been able to approve, or not approve, present a budget that is less than that, 2% overall. And it didn't come without hard decisions. And I think some of those adjustments we did make, we were trying not to discriminate, and in that, we, in essence, had a full-time employee freeze that unfortunately did affect for request. In compromise, we believe we allocated enough additional funds to help offset, at least during these inflationary times, those type of measures. So I just want to say, I submit and agree with the budget as presented and look forward to further comments.
Thank you. One question for staff. And with respect to the $732,000 reduction in contribution to employee pension, and I know we've already heard that the proposed cuts were with the input of staff, but we mentioned in hearing specifically the basis for that.
The basis for that cut?
Well, I mean, just, I guess a confirmation that this is an actuarially sound thing to do. Certainly, you know, pension underfunding is something that everyone in Connecticut is familiar with statewide, and you know, that's a trap that we as a town have done a good job of avoiding for many years. And so, you know, when I see a cut like this, I think it needs to be explained.
Just so you realize that the town, our proposed budget is what we had recommended, right? This proposal from the Town Council accomplishes the goals of reducing further. However, I have to say this, that we don't recommend, as we have last year kept pounding and pounding, that we need to fully fund our pension obligations. However, in light of hoping that next year you make that up, you know, otherwise, you're right, it's going to keep snowballing into the future and keep going. And, you know, we all know what happened in Connecticut.
Yeah, there's a small, and this is kind of broken up, and Mona can, if she can talk, explain, but there's a police portion of this, and then there's the rest of the town portion. And there's, I believe there's some special revenue that's going to be offsetting a little bit of the police portion of this cut, so it's not quite as big of a cut as you're seeing. The rest of it, I think, is just essentially that because our pension is in such good shape that we could afford to not have to pay as much this time. We'll have to revisit next year when we go through our actuarial review to see where things stand, but the feeling was that it would be okay to do this.
And I don't know if anyone wants to tolerate my voice.
No, please stop.
Give her a note.
I think it's important.
So the $700,000 is basically close to $500,000 on the police plan and $250,000 on the general plan. We talked to the actuaries, and ordinarily, we do a two-year review on all plans. But because we've reopened the police plan, and this is a large increase, we are going to have an annual review. So I think, although it's best, obviously, to fund it 100% today, we understand that where we're going, we'd like to get this to a lower mill rate. We will revisit this police amount for the upcoming year. The pension increase for the general definitely should be back to its normal level next year. If we've done it in the past, again, not highly recommended, but if we don't make it a continued practice, it's allowed.
Okay. So I'll just follow up then, just with some general comments. I mean, I want to state some serious misgivings about many of these proposed adjustments. A lot of them, you know, I think go into the category of kicking the can down the road. The one we just talked about, front and center, clearly in that category. I mean, you know, the explanation that I just received on the pension reduction, I consider less than satisfactory. I look at things like, you know, reducing salt and pretreatment by $30,000. So I guess the plan is to pray that we don't get much snow and ice storms this winter.
Well, I think that was more based on they had bought quite a bit already. We're kind of pre-planned for that.
We're overstocked right now.
Yeah.
Understood. You know, I see reductions, you know, smaller things, like grinding, you know. So I guess we'll stop grinding in February, and then we'll start July 1st with a backlog, you know. Motor fuel lubricants, it's a small number, but we'll stop oil changes in April, that sort of thing. That seems to be a theme that runs through this list, along with, you know, a freeze and headcount in a town that continues to grow in population and demand. So those are my misgivings. That said, I'm sensitive to the fact that our taxpayers are still feeling pain from last year's revaluation. There's still an adjustment period, I think, that people have to get through and kind of recalibrate to that. I understand how that compels a very austere budget for the coming year, which I believe is what we have here. And so, you know, weighing those concerns, I understand and accept the rationale behind this while, you know, warning everyone next year. I think whoever is in these seats next year, I don't envy us, them, whoever they may be, because we're setting ourselves up through this budget with some really significant challenges a year from now, and that concerns me. But that said, I feel like we're in sort of a uniquely tough position right now in the close aftermath of the revow. I get it. And so with deep misgivings, it's my intention to vote to approve this resolution.
Mimi, would you like to go?
I, you know, I'm also sensitive to the tax increases that we had last year, and I get that we have to have an austere budget, but I am very concerned about kicking the can down the road for some of these items. I think, again, the pension issue, we have to make that up at some point, and I think we have concerns with the uncertainty of federal funding, which impacts state funding, which impacts our funding, and we may find ourselves, I think I heard you say that for now, it's allowed that we can do that, but if we can't make it up next year or the year after, could that negatively impact our financial outlook or our bond rating?
Absolutely.
And I have concerns with that. The same thing with the capital improvements for the roads. We're kicking the can down the road. The materials are going to become more and more expensive and so forth. So I have concerns with that. Obviously, advocating for the seniors, I get that making that full-time, it includes benefits. I would request maybe that we consider doing, maybe making it 19 hours to 29 hours, so give some relief to Gina because she spends a lot of time trying to get grants and so forth. You know, we took a lot of, I mean, she's doing that for the food because that's her special revenues, because that was a big decrease. So I would make that request that that would be a more modest increase and would not include benefits. So I guess I'll move that as an amendment, to the amendment.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
What's the specifics of it?
I'm sorry?
What are the specifics of it?
That would be, hang on, number 28, the Human Services Program, part-time salaries. If they increase to, from 19 hours, I believe that 19 hours to 29 hours. I'm not sure what they get per hour, but I'm guessing it'd be somewhere around $10,000 for the year-ish.
Well, they're, that was already, they're requesting a part-time position.
The new position.
But they're 19 hours, so I'm saying 29 would give...
No, it was a new part-time position they're asking for.
No, I think that was to make the part-time position full-time.
Is that true?
No, it was to, I know. Go ahead, you...
Sorry.
I just can't help myself.
Give a current part-time person, that's at 19 hours to 29 hours.
Bring it up to additional hours. Yeah.
A current part-time.
A current part-time, not a new position, a current part-time. So that would alleviate benefits.
Yes, 29, 29 hours.
Yeah, I think they're at 19 hours now, and that would be an extra two, you know, 10 hours a week.
I'm not sure what they make, so...
So can we, just to clarify, because I thought the original request was for a part-time position that Gina thought down the road would become a full-time position. Is that...
Correct. Either to give additional, the end result was going to be a part-time person, not a full-time. So what we're reducing is her request for more part-time hours.
Right. So is that in line with what you were thinking, or...
Yeah, that one of the people that are part-time, just give them, or two, whatever, two people, five, whatever it is, to give more hours with the current staffing just adding the 10 hours a week.
But could I ask for clarification of this?
Yeah.
This $30,000 was for a new part-time position. It wasn't for adding hours. Is that correct?
She didn't pinpoint an individual. She wanted part-time hours for an assistant.
Correct. So that's a new position.
I thought it was making part-time, but it's the same. It would be 30, instead of 30,000.
That's the way she presented it.
I guess it was like a dollar amount you're looking for.
We can't do it in this line item. This is a new request.
Would be to, the rules reduction here is 30,000, so the notion would be to move that number, reduce that reduction to 15 or whatever. Is that what we're talking about here? Yep.
15 or 20, I don't know. I don't know what they make an hour. That's...
I mean, yes, that would help her, definitely.
If we reduce it to 20,000 instead of 30,000, 10,000, and make whatever hours they can get for that.
Yeah, okay. So the specific friendly amendment is to change the reduction from 30,000 to 20,000?
Correct.
Okay. That's what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know what they were making, but we can do, we can do whatever they can for that 10,000.
Was that second, we were in for a second, or was that discussion?
Can you state the amendment again, please, for clarity?
Item 28, Human Services Senior Programs, that we add additional, reduce the 30,000 reduction to 10,000 reduction, 20,000 reduction, leaving that 10,000 for additional hours for current part-time employees in that category.
So it's just changing the item from 30,000 to 20,000?
That's what she's proposing, right?
Correct.
Second?
Okay, so do we vote?
Is there any discussion?
We have a discussion about that right now. Then we'll revert back to discussion over there overall. So does anybody have discussion about that friendly amendment?
I have a concern because that's not what Gina proposed. She proposed $30,000 for a new position that would shadow her or eventually develop into a full-time position when she retires. I don't know how we're now changing her request and just adding hours to her department.
I have the same concern. I don't think we can, we should be doing this on the fly just because we think like this reduction should be lower. There should be a rationale for that 10,000.
It wasn't a request that she asked for.
Yeah, I don't see any rationale to do that.
What you're proposing.
She wanted more hours because she needs help.
She didn't say that. She said she wanted a person to shadow her and eventually ultimately be a full-time position for her, that person to take over. I don't think just adding hours to her staff is what her goal was. Her goal was to have a person there to follow her and shadow.
The idea of having that person is to give her some help because she's understaffed, so giving her additional hours would help initially.
But she wanted a specific person or qualification. She said the people there aren't qualified to do the position that she wants.
This would have been a good thing to have a discussion about, you know, in all those many, many weeks that we had ample time to discuss it. Would have been a great time because we could have gone back and looked. I do recall something about, like you're saying, having...
Yeah, so...
Shadow person.
Not a shadow person, but I'm losing something of that.
I know what you're referring to, Madam Mayor, there, because I did ask Gina very specifically about this. Was this a succession plan for her?
That's the word. Thank you.
And she did say it was a succession plan of sorts. I'm paraphrasing.
But I also talk to her every day, and she needs help. I'm there every day.
Okay, well...
Mona, is she, is a part-timer who's at 19 hours, is it a solid ceiling of 19 hours? Or could one week they put in 22 hours, and then, I mean, does Gina have that flexibility?
She has the flexibility. If the budget line has the flexibility. So, for example, this... So, for example, this is the part-time line. If you did, you know, give her like 10,000, she could increase the existing part-time people. But I'll say, you're correct, and your recollection is the goal was to have the person come in and be a shadow. Doing this would let one of her part-time people do extra hours, and she could go greater than 19. No greater than 29.
Can I ask a procedural question? Do we have to vote, because there may be other questions about things they want to change? Can we hear what all of the different questions are then? Because, you know, it may depend on if there's other things, you know.
I think it's kind of difficult, though. Yeah, I'd rather just do it one at a time.
I didn't know.
Yeah, that would be my preference to go item by item.
Anyone else want to be heard?
I'd like to comment.
That's true.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I mean, the challenge is, we could argue almost every one of the adjustments on this agenda should be adjusted for a particular purpose. And I'm not going to put one department ahead of the other when we went through the budget process. You know, I'm sure that, I'm not going to pick any department in particular, but every department that's on here would love to have additional hours. And we can't just say, hey, I'm on the Senior Liaison Committee, so let me support senior liaison. We have to look at the budget as a whole. And I think that's what we attempted here with the, with the adjustments we made. So, you know, I would not support adding additional hours to one department when there's other departments that have the same need.
Anyone else?
I concur with what Alan said.
All right, well, are you ready to take a vote? All in favor?
For the friendly amendment, aye.
For the friendly amendment, yeah.
Yep, okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion fails, sorry.
So we were doing comments.
Yeah.
For Mimi, out of maybe he has any other comments.
Mimi, do you have other comments?
No.
John, do you have comments?
Yeah. One, first, I have a clarifying question. And I probably don't recall this, but the telephone, that's being wrapped up into one area, right?
Yeah, those are all reclasses. They're putting it all into IT, so.
Right, okay, all right.
Yeah. Same for photocopier.
Right, okay. Yeah, I knew something was going on about that. Yeah, I mean, I just want to point out a couple of things, and I'm trying to think of last year, too. I know every budget is difficult, and we look at it in a macro environment, how we're trying to maintain services, but also monitor taxpayer money and that it's spent efficiently. So I'm not going to make any comments particular to this budget. I just want to make a couple of comments that we think about for the next upcoming budget. And how we can assure, reassure taxpayers that their money is being spent efficiently. So I just have three things. One is a municipal consultant that comes in and just does a top-down study of department processes, efficiency, things like that. Not a federal Doge or anything like that, just a municipal consultant that specializes in operational efficiencies to see and ensure that we are operating each department efficiently, that there's no waste or anything like that, and that we could leverage tri-town resources when available. And they range from 10 to 25,000 for a project or more. The second thing is school solar. As of 2023, there were 300 public schools in the state that have solar installations. One example is Graton, which they expect to save $40,000 per year after installing solar panels on just two of their schools. In the whole agreement, they would be saving 800,000. And the third thing is, well, actually, let me just give one more example on this solar. In Branford, they're installing panels that have a 20-year lifespan, and they're projecting $10,000 per year savings just for one school in electric bills. The third thing are, and we've talked about this before, are EVs. And besides state incentives to the municipalities, there's a charging infrastructure program for municipalities to install charging stations with financial assistance, and we also get federal tax credits. It's not just for owners of EVs. So we need to think about, you know, we keep on conveying that this budget is responsible. It's been tough. We have to bite the bullet sometimes and things like that, but we're not reassuring taxpayers that we also see a vision for the future to save money. It's going to spend, you know, we'll have to spend money for solar upfront, but we'll be saving in the long run. And I think that's what we start, we need to start having discussions about, because me as a taxpayer, I'm not really reassured that year after year after year of these budgets that we're looking for the future, we're just looking at capital improvements, and that's it. So I think something like this where if we spend a dollar and over the long term we save two or three dollars or more, people are getting more value for their money, and businesses will want to move to Rocky Hill because we have that vision. So I, for this budget, I support Mimi's questions about senior services. I'd like to see them get more support. And I do support, you know, a lot of the other comments that were made, so I'm, I'll be voting affirmative on the budget.
Thank you. Did you, did you have anything else? Okay. Would you mind if I, excuse me?
I'm sorry, okay.
Would you mind if I went out of order and let Counselor Whalen talk, because I think it's a great segue based on what you said, John, because you made some really excellent points, and Counselor Whalen has been making these same points. And so I want to let you.
Sure.
Ask that you go next, if that's okay.
I appreciate that, and I do support Counselor Emanuel's idea of efficiency study. I've tossed it around a few times with some people, and, you know, a separate set of eyes looking at our government could be beneficial. You know, we could save some money, see some cuts, maybe regionalize some resources out there. We look at our budget, you know, we're not all experts. You know, our town, our department heads, they're trying to do the best they can, but maybe somebody else with another set of eyes who does this for a living comes in and just looks over our whole town, you know, different departments, talks through the department heads, and tries to come up with positive ideas that down the road maybe will be beneficial and more efficient. So thank you for bringing that up. I'll support that, and hopefully we will have discussions soon with something of that nature. If you don't mind, I'll just carry on a little bit about the budget stuff. I want to apologize just to taxpayers as we talk. The mill rate's going up, which is going to raise some of your property taxes. But I do support this budget. We did spend our caucus side hours and days looking at ways to trim this and work it out without losing our services that we provide for our town. If somebody is to look at our budget, the biggest portion of our budget is salary and benefits. Years ago, municipality and state government used to have a lower to moderate starting salaries with great benefits. Our town has evolved into a town that gives high salaries and the good benefits, there are superior benefits. You know, I'd encourage our town manager and our superintendent school to look at ways to, when you bring in a new hire, bring it in at a moderate scale, not the top scale where the high salary is, because we do give out very lucrative raises as well, yearly as well. So our budget grows every time with our employee's salary side. This year, our town municipal budget, we had a hiring freeze. So we took into consideration, you know, hiring new people, expanding hours without affecting our services. The Board of Ed side is not going to do that same position. I understand they have to hire educators, and that's very important, and they have to have special ed educators, which is needed. So just ask the town manager and the superintendent schools, hold the department heads to task, and have them live within the budget that's presented. Thank you.
Are we coming back to the word?
Yeah.
I'm not sure anymore. Well, so let me start by saying that I'm really thankful to Ray and Mona. Like everybody said, I'm going to join all those people in saying that, you know, Mona lost her voice, and it's because of Jeff Levine and numerous messages that were conveyed and conveyed back and all that. So everybody worked very hard on this budget. I mean, we, like any other town in the state, rely on property taxes, and it's always a, it's always a fine line between, between passing a budget with increased taxes and maintaining services while being fiscally responsible. And as council members, we have been listening to our residents discussing in forums and social media and everywhere else. And we are always looking for ways to protect our taxpayers from unnecessary increases. And as a matter of fact, I voted against the budget last year. And I think it's pertinent to say that because we make every effort in this council, whether you vote for the budget a given year or you vote against the budget any other given year, we are always trying to prioritize needs versus wants, right? And we might fall on any given budget, different positions in different places, but the goal is the same for all of us, which is to do what other households do in this town, our households. We are also residents here, obviously. We are also facing inflationary environment, and we are trying to do the best to balance those needs versus wants, right? So this budget continues to provide high-quality town services, which we have come to expect, and rely on, and also, it's worth mentioning that more than 50% of our budget, I think it's 52%, at this point, I might be wrong, might be 54 at this juncture, is schools. And I'm very proud of our school system. I have a 15-year-old who goes to the school system. So I am a firsthand consumer of the school system, and I, like I said, I'm very proud of it. And when your budget is so heavily skewed towards the schools and you want to maintain the quality of these schools, you have to fund them at the appropriate level. And I think we have achieved that balance when it comes to our schools as well in this budget, where we are funding the necessary CIP spending as well as the operational spending to keep that high level, that quality that we have come to expect in our school systems. This is, this budget is not perfect, and like I said, I voted against last year's budget. But this budget is as close to, as it gets, to that line of balancing spending versus services. And so I will be supporting this budget and voting for it. Thank you.
Alan here. Then the mayor.
Okay. So I'll echo a little bit of what some of my fellow counselors said. These budgets aren't easy to do. But our budget cycle really starts after tonight. We need to start planning the next budget at the next council meeting. Because if we don't make changes to how we do things as a town, we're going to be in the same spot again next year, right? Our salaries are going to continue to go up roughly 3%. Health insurance costs, I think, went up. I don't know what ours did, but the Hartford Current had an article, over 8%. We just can't continue to do that and go to market the same way. So Counselor Emanuel, I would support a study. I don't know what it brings. I don't know what it solves, but it's something that we got to be open to. I've brought up at other meetings, regionalization. We have to do things with other towns. We've done it with Parks and Recs with a mower. It's a small deal. We got to continue it because we have to spread the resources further and further down the road. The challenge is, we don't get our fair share from the state of Connecticut. We could argue about unfunded mandates, but I'll also go on as a town that is fiscally responsible and well-managed. We're not eligible for certain grants because we don't show the same needs other towns do. So our schools applied for a safety grant a year or two years ago, and they got a couple of hundred dollars. It wasn't even worth applying for the grant, and it was because we were economically sustainable as a town, we were fiscally responsible. I don't know if that's fair, because as residents of the state of Connecticut, we're paying into the pot. The state of Connecticut's sitting on a surplus. They're not giving it back. They're holding it for their rainy day fund. But, you know, it's a rainy day. We're in an inflationary period. We have needs. There's cuts from the federal government. The state's feeling it. They pass it on down to the towns. The other issue, and I'll point to the state again, we have no other way to raise revenue except through property taxes and small fees. I'm somebody who travels for work quite a bit. A lot of the country is regionalized through counties. When I stay in a hotel, I pay a tax for whatever that area requires. We don't have an occupational tax that the town of Rocky Hill gets a share of. I pitched it to the state. It was shot down. It's on the books. I don't, the state budget at this point, based on timing, isn't complete, so we don't even know what changes may be made. Will the fire department be funded to go up on the highway? Will they not be funded? That goes towards uniforms. It's the unknowns that impact the budget. So we have to start thinking about what changes we could make as a town now. So when we come to next year's budget cycle, we could have a mill rate that is sustainable for the residents of Rocky Hill as well as the employees of Rocky Hill. It's a balance. So I support the budget. I just want to see us change the processes so we can get to a point that it is sustainable long-term.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you had a question.
No.
Yeah, no.
Just calling you.
Well, so I actually have prepared marks, so if you're, if you're watching from home, it's time to get your popcorn and settle in because it's a little bit long. So, but, but because tonight is the most important night, really, in, in the year for our community, there are a lot of points that I want to touch upon, and so I ask that you bear with me. So this budget came to us at a very critical time that was and is marked by economic headwinds, complex fiscal pressures, and important choices that are going to shape the future of our community. And as we navigated this year's budget process, we did so under the weight of several interlocking challenges that have been mentioned here already. That is a reduction in our grant list, the continued burden of unfunded and underfunded mandates, and decreased state aid. These pressures are not theoretical. They have real implications for the services our residents depend upon, for the businesses that power our local economy, and for the long-term sustainability of our town's fiscal health. Moreover, the impact of the 2023 property revaluation is still being felt across Rocky Hill. And while revaluation is an important mechanism because it ensures the fairness and taxation, we understand its ripple effect on households and businesses, especially at a time when families are already coping with rising utility costs and inflation. We have taken great care to respond to this shift in valuation with a balanced and thoughtful approach. And despite these challenges, I am proud to say that this budget reflects a fiscally responsible response, one that preserves the high-quality services Rocky Hill is known for. It keeps our neighborhoods safe. It maintains our roads and infrastructure, and it continues to support, excuse me, to support strong public schools. We've also taken deliberate steps to minimize the tax increase, understanding that the strain on our residents and our small businesses are already under. But in doing so, we have not lost sight of the future, and we must be careful not to create a budgetary bubble, one that postpones hard choices and results in a deficit of unfunded obligations in future years. We know and we understand that fiscal discipline today protects our sustainability tomorrow. This year's budget advances a paydown of existing debt and commits to working within our means for capital improvements, which is reversing a path. our means for capital improvements, which is reversing a past practice of borrowing that often shifted financial burdens forward. This shift requires both short and long-term strategies, strategies that enhance our financial standing while maintaining the services our community expects and deserves. The new mill rate, while it is a change, reflects a shared commitment to a sustainable, equitable, and forward-looking Rocky Hill. It reflects our collective responsibility to uphold the progress we've made and to invest in the future that we envision. And I want to be clear about something, that the historic investments that we have made in infrastructure and in redevelopment and in our school system were not accidental. They were the product of deliberate and disciplined planning, the kind of planning that has earned Rocky Hill its reputation as one of the top communities in the state, a place where young professionals want to live, where families want to raise their children, and where seniors feel confident in retiring. And that careful planning is evident once again in this budget. We are moving forward with major school construction, targeted investments in public safety and core services, and infrastructure upgrades that are necessary not just for today, but for decades to come. We are proud of what this budget can accomplish, because it strengthens our schools, both through operational support and capital investment, it protects our core services from public works to emergency response, it responds to the financial realities facing residents and businesses, and it does all of this with a minimal increase in the tax burden achieved through strategic decision-making rather than short-term fixes. In closing, I would like to thank our town manager, the finance director and her team, the department heads, the many residents who engaged in this process. A big, big thanks to our deputy mayor Greenspan and to Counselor Levine, who spent many hours on the phone, as they have indicated, and most importantly, using their backgrounds to explain this very complex budget to us and helping us get through that. And to the public, your voices matter, and your priorities have helped to shape this budget. Together, we are building a Rocky Hill that is resilient, responsible, and ready for the future. Those are my remarks.
So with that, we'll take a vote. So, all in favor of the adjustments? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So, I believe, eight, eight to one, did I see?
You got that?
Okay. Okay. So shall we move on to the resolution that talks about the mill rate itself?
Okay.
Town Council Resolution, May 15, 2025, adoption of the 2025-26 annual budget. Be it resolved that for the fiscal year 2025-26, general fund budget dated May 15, 2025, as itemized by department, board, committee, commission, or other purpose, and providing for total expenditures, the amount of $101,683, $683,331, with $55,491,000, $55,491,771 for the Board of Education, $7,695,168 for debt retirement, and $38,496,392 for other departments, boards, committees, commissions, and other purposes of the town of Rocky Hill, being hereby is adopted pursuant to Section 806 of the Town Charter. Be it further resolved that for the fiscal year 2025-26, tax levy of the town of Rocky Hill shall be established in the amount of $87,024,56, and the tax rate upon the grand list of October 1, 2024 shall be $30.24 per thousand dollars of taxable value for real property, personal property, and motor vehicles. Be it further resolved that tax bills in the following amounts shall be due in one installment on July 1, 2025. Real estate tax bills of $300 or less, all motor vehicle tax bills, personal property tax bills of $500 or less. Be it further resolved that all other tax bills shall be due in two equal installments, payable without interest in or penalty, on July 1, 2025, and January 1, 2026. Be it further resolved that all motor vehicle and personal property tax bills in the amount of $2 and under are hereby waived. Be it further resolved that the town manager is hereby authorized to secure bids for items approved in the budget, subject to the provisions of the charter. Be it further resolved that the capital improvement program, 2025 to 2026 through 2029, 2030, be and is hereby adopted pursuant to Section 802 and 806 of the Town Charter. Be it further resolved that the capital improvement program, 2025 to 2026 through 2029, 2030, is a forecast of capital expenditures and may be modified to meet changes in priorities that occur within the community over time. With that, the certification, the foregoing resolution was adopted by the Town Council at its May 15, 2025 Town Council Special Meeting, Joanne Booth, Council Clerk. I guess we need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, without, all in favor? Signify.
Aye.
All opposed? And no abstentions? I think eight to one to go. Thanks for your help, everybody.
Okay, and now we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.